Independent School District Special Board Video Conference Meeting of the Board of Trustees. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. That is input electronic sign up show the rules for participating at the link provided in the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on the issue raised. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:03 PM. We have a quorum with Charles Fields, San Pedro Ramirez, Shane Haggerty, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, Catherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Trustee Lucero, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence?
Pledge allegiance to this flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, a pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lucero. Ms. Reynolds.
Yes, sir.
Tonight, do we have any citizens input?
Yes, sir, we have a Mr. Arseniaga. Let me let him in.
Okay, thank you. Let him know that we're ready for him to go ahead and get started.
Mr. Arseniaga, you can go ahead and speak.
Oh, good evening. My name is Lorenzo Arseniaga. My son is a student at YISD. Thank you for the time and for all your efforts in ensuring our children have the best and safest opportunity for a premier education. With that in mind, it is my belief and the belief of many of my friends whose children also attend YISD that an in-person education should be considered as essential, if not more essential, than Walmart, Home Depot, Little League Baseball, and McDonald's, all of which have been or are already a risk mitigated in-person experience. As families and policymakers make decisions about their children returning to school, it is important to consider the full spectrum of benefits and risks of both in-person and remote learning options. Parents are understandably concerned about the safety of their children at school in the wake of COVID-19. However, aside from a child's home, no other setting has more influence on a child's health and well-being than their school. And because of that, I ask that you vote down extending remote education to eight weeks. The in-person school environment does the following: provides educational instruction, supports the development of social and emotional skills, creates a safe environment for learning, addresses nutritional needs, facilitates physical activity, allows parents to work rather than become ill-prepared homeschoolers. To support those points, I offer the following data as published in the 23 July 2020 article posted on the CDC and Prevention website entitled "The Importance of Reopening America's Schools This Fall." COVID-19 presents little risk to school-aged children. According to the CDC, as of 17 July 2020, children under 18 account for under 7% of positive cases and less than 0.1% of the related deaths. Those numbers align with the El Paso County data found on epstrong.org, where that age accounts for 10% of the positive cases and zero deaths for children under 18. Contrasted with flu, from every flu season between 2004 and 2019, between 37 and 187 flu-related deaths in school-aged children were reported to the CDC. During the H1N1 pandemic, 358 pediatric deaths were reported. So far in this pandemic, there have been less COVID-19 school-aged deaths than in the last five flu seasons. Due to my time limit, I cannot elaborate on the wealth of data in the very same CDC article that documents the negative impacts on educational learning and retention as in-person education is abandoned for remote learning, as published in numerous studies regarding what was learned during school closures from March to June of this year and during other similar historical events when kids don't go to school. How social interactions at school among children in grades PK through 12 is particularly important for development of language, communication, social, emotional, and interpersonal skills. Extended school closures are harmful to children's development of said skills. The article details how routine in-person contacts provide opportunities to facilitate social, emotional development that are difficult, if not impossible, to replicate through distance learning. Extended school closures deprive children who live in unsafe homes and neighborhoods of an important layer of protection from neglect, as well as physical, sexual, and important layer of physical, sexual, and emotional maltreatment and abuse. A 2018 Department of Health and Human Services report found that teachers and other educational staff were responsible for more than one-fifth of all reported child abuse cases, more than any other category reporter. The issue and nutritions are well documented. Physically, beyond PE, with school closed, children may not have sufficient opportunities to participate in organized and safe physical activity. They also lose access to other school-based physical activities, including recess, classroom engagements, and after-school programs, ROTC, band, dance, flags, and the list goes on. In conclusion, on-campus education is an important part of the infrastructure for our communities. It provides safe, supportive learning environments for students, employees, teachers, and other staff, and enables parents, guardians, and caregivers to work. School closures disrupt the delivery of in-person instruction and critical services to children and families, which has negative individual and societal ramifications. The best available evidence from countries that have opened schools indicate that COVID-19 poses low risk to school-aged children and suggests that children are unlikely to be major drivers of the spread of it.
I'm so sorry, I missed.
I urge you to please make every effort to immediately reopen our schools to the essential in-person experience it was meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ochoa, you're muted.
I got it. Thank you so much. See, it just happens. I want to say thank you, Mr. Arseniaga. He already left. He never heard me. But, okay, let's get started. Action item number one, which is very important. That's why we're having this meeting today. Extension of the start-of-year transition period regarding on-campus instruction. Is there any discussion? Please raise your hand so I can give you the floor. Mr. Shane.
You had a comment, a few questions. My first comment was, I appreciate those, the comment from the public, the Safe Return to Schools article that he was referencing that was updated August 1st. And there's a lot of new information on there, which brings me to my question on the number three of the Be It Resolved on the resolution. It says, "Safe, effective return on campus for students, teachers, and staff," and then it gives a gives some guidelines as to when we can when we're saying it's safe to do so. The testing positive rate by the CDC, less than 7.5%, the seven-day rolling average cases per capitalist and 25 cases per 100,000. The, that number, the 25 cases per 100,000 is a higher threshold than our rest, reimagine, respond, and anyway, that puts it into the red column. Is there a way that we can maybe alter that if we're putting that that's what our threshold is for returning to school? Because again, that's, that's in the red column where we don't want to return back to school. And then regarding safe, effective return on campus, students, teachers, and staff. Does that mean that the staff that is there now, who, at least the ones that are in the higher I can't think of when, when you're more likely to get the disease for some reason, I can't think of it. But the ones that are in that category, can those be allowed to work from home if they've already been asked to return to the campuses?
Good evening, Mr. Haggerty. If I may, let me address question one, and then I think I'll need help from Ms. Russell Garcia on the third part of your question. With regard to the resolution and that third bullet, the Public Health Authority released on Tuesday those factors. However, the district has been calculating and capturing data from the beginning of the pandemic and watching the each-week statistics and using those metrics to guide our decisions and our planning process. We didn't know until Tuesday, the local health authority was going to issue different metrics, which are what is included in the resolution today. Obviously, we'll have to revise our plan to now match what the local health authority has issued, but we'd also like to work with Dr. Okaranza because his metrics are different, and there are others out there, various state and health entities that are using the same or very similar metrics to what we included in our plan. And then you ask about
The word I was thinking of was high-risk. The staff that's already back at school that are considered high-risk, that haven't been given the opportunity to work from home, since we're not, if this is approved, if we're not returning to October, can those employees then be able to work from home as opposed to continuing coming into the campus?
May I, may I address Mr. Haggerty, Board President, Dr. De La Torre? Those employees that are high-risk, that can perform their duties at home, are being given the option to work from home. However, there are some positions that don't allow for it. One of those, one example of that would be a budget clerk. Their job is to collect money or a bookroom clerk to pass out books. And so if they aren't able to do that from their home, then they would require to come in. However, if they do have an underlying health condition that does make them high-risk, there are other options under the FFCRA, an additional 12 weeks. Unfortunately, they wouldn't have been paid their full salary. They would be paid 75% of their salary. And so that's another option that we're affording those employees as well.
Right, counselors who have returned and those other job classifications that they should be able to complete their work from home?
Yes, and if a counselor can complete their work from home, and there are no functions at the campus that they're required to do, then definitely they can work from home. There were some instances in the last week, sir, where we did need them to come in, especially at our high school level, because they do review transcripts and they, they pass out different things to the employees, but we expect that to, to dwindle down as the school year starts. It's just as we're getting prepared for virtual instruction, picking up devices, parent calls, that sort of thing, sir.
Sounds perfect. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Bustillos?
Okay, I know academic school's first, and I'm all about the safety of our kids and our teachers, but I know there's a lot of questions out there about, about our upcoming sports seasons and stuff like that. Can anybody explain with us prolonging online learning, how that's going to work or what that's going to look like? So that way, our coaches and our, and our athletes that are, are out there have a picture of what's going to happen or how it's going to work?
What I can tell you is that, and I'll let others certainly speak to it, the, the difficulty is that the UIL the authority when it comes to athletics. And while they, I believe, are working closely with state and local officials as well, depending on what part of the country and what part of the state, especially in Texas, there are different degrees of interest and insistence by some regions in Texas to have a fall sports season. That isn't the case in all areas. According to what we're being told, we are in a suspended pattern where there is really no timeline, and there certainly isn't a timeline that aligns to the timeline that we're working with relative to the academic program in our school district. And so it almost feels like they are two separate and distinct programs going on in the state, and they don't necessarily align with one another. So we've put a lot of emphasis on, on the academic piece and the reentry piece, and the coaches and athletic director, athletic coordinators have all really been focusing on what they get from the UIL in their weekly meetings. And at present, they've not given us anything definitive relative to whether or not we should expect to have a fall sports season. And it's becoming, I think, less and less likely that that will happen. What I'm understanding is that there is some conversation about taking some of the fall programs and looking at initiating them as a winter sport and even a spring sport if things don't improve significantly in the near future. Lindley, do you want to add to that?
Hi, sir. Robert is on the line, and he can further elaborate, but I do know volleyball, because that happens to be the sport I really like. I know they're pushing it to December, January, and into that timeframe, but there's Mr. Basorto, and I think he can elaborate.
Good evening, Mr. Bustillos, President Ochoa, Dr. La Torre. Yes, we've been meeting with our directors weekly, and we have been updating our protocols. That all being said, originally, we had established our game schedules based on the September 8th start date. Now, things are a little in limbo because we know that different parts of the state, people are closing down, and it's kind of counterintuitive for us to offer athletics while we're not offering face-to-face. Mike has been on, Mr. Williams, our athletic director, has been on contact weekly, and we have definitive guidance relative to the scheduling. So that's like right from the holding pattern, but we are looking into it to see exactly how that will impact the overall schedule. I would imagine, just off the top of my head, just looking at the schedule and the timelines, it's like Dr. La Torre stated, I would think if, for example, Dallas, I know Dallas is pushing towards closing through, I think, almost the end of October into November, so that means they may not even participate. So I don't know if they're going to have to change all the schedules around and maybe push the fall sports over to the spring. Again, we haven't received much guidance from UIL and relative to the, the schedules, but we are looking into it. And as soon as we get that information, we'll get that out. I know the, all the athletic directors within the region are speaking to each other, and that's the hot topic right now is, how is that going to impact the schedules that we created just a couple of weeks ago based on the September 8th guidance?
Thank you. And like you said, I think it's all, it's like, like you guys said, it's fluid, it's changing every day. And I just get, I get asked that question, and, and I thought maybe you guys had a little bit more, but like, it is fluid every day. So thank you for the, for the answers. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Basorto.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Doctor, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Bustillos. Anybody else have any comments or questions that they want to ask?
I would just like to follow up to see for these weeks that we're going to extend.
Can't hear you, Catherine, too well.
Can you hear me now?
No. Yes, we can.
Okay. I would just like to know for the weeks, if the extension is approved this evening for the folks that are not, that we discussed last meeting, bus drivers, lunch folks, all the, all the other employees, will they be covered during this time?
Know that they're not covered, but what Ms. Leaper and her team are attempting to do, if the employee is willing, excuse me, is create employment opportunities around the district to try and keep these individuals gainfully employed and receiving some form of compensation. But if we were to extend the online learning program, and if TEA were to grant the waiver, then you're right, we wouldn't necessarily need the number of bus drivers that we would not necessarily need the number of employees and the number of substitute teachers, who, by the way, I've learned that many of them rely on substitute teaching work at home for their families. And at times, we have over 1,000 substitutes on the roll. There isn't much we can do for a substitute teacher, but we can certainly try and find responsibilities and roles for those full-time employees in the district who, because of no fault of their own, would otherwise not be paid. And Lindley's done, I think, a great job of finding or creating many opportunities as possible. I don't know whether or not it will cover all of them. Lindley?
Yes, sir. We have about 266 bus drivers that are the primary employees affected, and so far, I believe, we have 105-ish of them placed. There are a few that have opted not to work. Didn't want the opportunities that we provided, and I think we have probably 10 categories of work that we've identified across campuses and in other areas that the workers could help us with. And so we have a pretty solid plan, and I believe most of them received notice either today or yesterday about where they can report and what their assignments will be. And we tried to accommodate their relocation, so if they're normally reporting to the Northeast, we tried to place them at a campus in the Northeast or in the Valley based on their preferences. And also, we considered their preferences for the type of work they'd like to do. But they've been invaluable for provisioning devices for, they're beginning to look at classrooms, help us create a mini task force essentially that's going to look at each classroom setup to ensure that social distancing is appropriate, to ensure the desk dividers are set up accurately, because some people have tried to set up their own, and they're not ready yet to do that. And it's been a lower priority since we know we're not returning immediately for face-to-face instruction. We haven't focused our efforts on setting up those classrooms, but now that we have this little bit of time, we're using those employees to help us make sure that every classroom is appropriately prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Ms. Woodruff?
So Ms. Lucero's question brought to my mind, oh, what are we going to do for teachers who might have to be absent from, from their online learning? I mean, people could still get sick. People could still have to have a doctor's appointment or whatever during those times. Is there any, what, what's going to happen during that time?
Mrs. Woodruff, Dr. De La Torre, President Ochoa, Board of Trustees. We actually have a plan in place. We'll be training our substitute teachers next week on remote teaching. And what that will entail is, how do I log into the classroom? How do I have access to lesson plans? Because they are still going to need to have those, those items. As well as, how do I take attendance? Because it's no longer going to be the paper roster that they're used to getting. So that will take place next week. And then once our, our safety videos are ready to go, then we will be training them in the safety piece of it once we go face-to-face. We are still utilizing substitute teachers, although it may be less, in less frequency than we're used to, but we will definitely be utilizing them.
Okay, thank you very much.
My pleasure, Mrs. Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Yeah, I had just a couple of questions. Dr. De La Torre, the, the surveys, the parent surveys about going, you know, being online or coming to, in face-to-face, do you have an update on that or where we're at on the responses back from the community?
I believe that the last survey that we collected indicate that between and depending on the school and the I believe that the last survey that we collected indicate that between and depending on the school and the the community. That we should expect anywhere from 20 to 30% of our parents to send their children back to school. Should schools open or when schools open. 60, 70% of the parents, and keep in mind, we did the survey in July and in July. The the number of cases were accelerating and climbing pretty significantly. So we saw the 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 numbers go from almost a 60, 40 to something closer to a 70, 30. But the the actual numbers still indicate that. You still have a fair number of parents out there who are reaching out every day. Just as the gentleman who spoke here this evening, really asking the district. To please consider opening schools for those parents and those students. Who are willing to return. And by the way, the the waiver that we're requesting. I think there's a misconception in the community that that allows the entire district to remain online for that eight week period. There is language in that document from the Texas Education Agency. That indicates that if parents after the September eighth transition period. Insist on having their students attend school. That the school district could jeopardize funding if it doesn't at least provide the opportunity. For those parents and those students who do want to come back while allowing other parents and students who are uncomfortable. To remain on an online platform.
Okay. Yesterday. Is my understanding as part of this resolution, we had the the district had meetings with the D E I Cs. To get their feedback. Do you, can you let us know how how those meetings went? What was the consensus? And just the feeling on on across the district?
So we had two meetings yesterday. The first in the morning was with leadership and we laid out. And notified them that we would be coming to you this evening and and asking you to approve. Submitting a waiver to T E A and allowing T E A to consider our argument to have an extended transitional program. I will tell you, I'm very proud of the leadership in this school district. Everybody is. Still high energy, still very optimistic. The indication I get is that they'll do whatever it takes to make it work for as many families as possible. The second meeting was the D E I C and the D E I C is made up of some parents, but primarily teachers. And when we surveyed them at the end of that meeting. It was pretty clear that those teachers that participated were reluctant to come back and. Teach in a traditional public school setting, a face to face setting. And in their comments, they cited a number of of reasons for that. And of course, the the first is their own safety and the safety of their family. You know, and the second is that. There has been, or was, there was, I don't believe that's the case today, but there was recently quite a spike. In the number of reported cases. And so they're just understandably anxious and reluctant to commit to coming back. So two very different tones. Leaders and and the leadership ready to go if if that's what we need to do. I think they all understand that, and I think we all believe it. That under normal circumstances, the face to face environment is optimal. Under these circumstances. Probably not. And so it's understandable why the D I C that's made up primarily of of teachers and employees with some parents in there. Opted, I would say 90% to 10% to extend the online learning for as long as possible.
The other, I would just like to make one comment, President Ochoa and. You know, we've been getting phone calls and emails from from the community and and falling on different ways and and. And by the way, when I say the community, I mean from outside of our school district as well. And I appreciate those those families and that are sending. Sending their information that did not come from a a think tank or whatever it is. You know, telling them what to say, but I I would like to make a comment that I I think that. Knowing this Board of Trustees, knowing the leadership of this district is that we we. We we take the safety of of the children and our our staff. Very seriously, but we also, but we also take seriously the responsibility of educating children. And as people have found out that public ed, public education is not only responsible for taking, for educating children, they're doing so much more. And it's not just a few things, it's literally hundreds of things. And so. I I understand the concerns on both sides of this fence. I I would just like to make an observation is that I'm I'm appreciative of of all the facts and and the. The documents out there, but I would just like to remind everybody that. You know, we've done an incredible job of protecting children since March of this year. Keeping them home, keeping them away from things and and we've got over 5 million public school children in Texas. We've got over 50 million kids in the country. And when we start putting them all back into the regular school environment. There may be a change in the dynamic and and I'm not forecasting doom, I'm just saying there could be a change and and I think we need to to be. Cautious going forward, but I do understand the needs and and trust me, we. We have had, I'm sure all the trustees had discussions with the associates or Dr. Latore. About our concerns, you know, especially for our our most needy students who who benefit from a public education. So I would just like to make that observation. Thank you, President Ochoa.
I did want to also mention that Dr. Chacon also had a meeting with the parent. Or Principal's Advisory Committee. That one is made up of all the parents, so it would be good maybe for for you to hear. From Dr. Chacon as to what the tone was in that meeting.
Good evening, President Ochoa, Dr. Latore, members of the board. And in the meeting that Dr. Latore had with D I C, we also met with our parents and. They also provided us input as regarding the safety of their kids. And also their their where they stand right now. And so we, they kind, they similar to what Dr. Latore said, the data stands where. They are concerned about the safety of our kids. However, we also did receive positive comments that safety of their kids is taken serious by the district. So they provided us their input.
Thank you. Yes, for your comments, I think they hit the nail right on the, right on the head. Go to the rest. If you have anything.
I just wanted to also let you know one thing, and that is that that we have, as we've mentioned. Been collecting actual day by day data. And here real soon, what we'd like to do, certainly with your support, is put that on our webpage. And if I can trouble Lindley, who's been working closely with Raul on the daily statistics relative to positive cases and whether or not. Here locally in El Paso, we seem to be in a regression or or it continues to grow. We're gonna know every single day how things are going and we'd really like to continue and promote. That reputation that I believe we've earned as a district for always being very deliberate and thoughtful. Anytime we have big decisions to make and allowing the, as I've said before, the science, the medicine and the data. Guide our thinking and inform our actions. So I don't know whether or not Lindley, we can transition to a sample of what y'all can expect. To see maybe here in the near future.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Again, President Ochoa, members of the board and Dr. De Latore. As several of you have mentioned, we have been tracking data and the data has been. Collected and then Dr. Medellin has visuals that we anticipate probably being able to put on the website maybe next week. But our purpose behind this, and I need to preface it with saying that because we've been capturing data since March. We actually have all of these visuals and these metrics prepared. And then the city released a different metric. So what Dr. Medellin is going to show you now is what we have collected and the visuals representing. Our data in summaries that align with our plan, which as Trustee Hagerty mentioned, was written with the yellow status in mind. So we anticipated red would mean closure, yellow would mean we could begin transitioning back to face to face instruction. So we've been monitoring to see when we would be in that category. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Medellin and let him present some slides to let you see those data metrics and the visuals that accompany them. And then we'll be putting those up on the website probably in the next week. Hi, Dr. Medellin, you ready?
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time. I would like to just give you a quick overview of the data that we have been collecting. And I am going to share my screen with just with you with here for a moment. So that I can show you. You have seen this, the disease activity indicators on the plan. And I would like to start with, I just a general explanation to see where they are coming from, how we're getting this information. Where we're getting this information from and what are we doing with the information so that we can have. A better understanding of what this disease is doing as it goes through the the city. So as you know, this is what it would look like, the 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 indicators that would look on. The disease activity, we have three indicators, the average number of new cases for the prior week. The average weekly positivity rate is in the average number of new cases compared to the previous week. Now, this graph right here is what would have come up this Friday, last Friday. For the following week. And these are the numbers that are, these are the real numbers that we would have, that we would have calculated for them. And if you would like, I'd like to go through the numbers to, so that you can know where the information is coming from and why. We are using it. The first one is the average number of new cases for the prior week, which is a little bit different from what the new indicators from the city were were. In discuss. In that it's a little bit simpler to understand and it kind of measures the same idea. So what we do is we take the source from the source, we take it from the seal. Of El Paso Strong dot org. Which is the one that the Department of Health. Places all the information that they have. We capture this information daily. And then we look back at seven days of the cumulative positive, the total number of cases as as added by the city. From there, we calculate how many new positive cases. Now, the the website at this point has the new, the new number of cases per day, but it never, it it didn't have to, it didn't used to have that before. They started. Placing those numbers. Two weeks back. And so we're, we we went back and calculated from the beginning of when these numbers were were being measured. A little bit more information and we could. See how these indicators behave on real data. And so we take the number of new positive cases and just, you know. There are seven days, we add up the numbers. Now, this number is fairly close to the one that the city is looking at because they are looking at the total number of cases in a week. By, our population is around 800,000 people. And so they will take seven days divided by eight as opposed to seven days divided by. We're using this because it's a little bit more clear to everybody where this number is coming from. And so from that average, then we look at the indicators and say, okay, so where are we? Are we between 25 or less? Are we 26? Are we 100 and more? And if that's the case, then we code it appropriately. Red. For the average weekly positivity rate, this one, I believe, is one of those indicators that is a little bit harder to talk about. Because it's not something, we have heard about it lately, not something that we that we truly use. All the time. And basically, the idea here for a positivity rate is if you were to measure every, everybody in El Paso, if you were to give everybody in El Paso. The number of positive cases will tell you how many people in El Paso have the disease. This is an approximation, of course, because we're not testing everybody at the same time and not everybody gets sick at the same time. So it gives you a general idea of how much. Of the disease is out in the public. And it also tells you whether we are testing enough to see the real extent of the disease. But we come from the same set of. And in addition to the to the total number of cases, we look at how many tests have been provided up to that point. Now, the reason we do this is because the city does not provide us how many new tests are given in a single. Provide us a little bit of data on there on the city lab, but not on every test that is. And so we grab that information and we count the new part and new positive cases we have. And then how many new tests were done? We add those up for the week. And then we find the number of positive cases divided. The total number of of of. That gives us the positivity rate. And that we then compare to our metrics. Is it 5% or less, which is the WHO's recommendation for for positivity? Or is it between 5.1 and 9.9 or 10% or more? And we code it green, yellow or red accordingly. And the last one is the change in the average number of new cases. Now, this one is basically the same as the first indicator, where we're looking at two separate weeks to see where the disease is going. Use the same data as before. If the previous week's average. And compare it to this week's average. And we ask ourselves, what happened? Do we have more new tests on average or less new tests on average? Difference is what becomes our change from one week to. And so if that change is less than. The regular noise that we have from day to day and from week to week, then we code it green. If we have it just within the noise, then we say it hasn't really changed. And and there's noise because people tend to. Test more in certain days than others, a certain test take longer than others. And so when there's a backlog in the lab, you may get some positive number. Either week into the following week and things like that. It's. To compensate for that a little bit to make sure that we are getting as accurate information as possible. So from there, then, out of these three indicators, then we ask ourselves, do we have two indicators in the red? If we do, then we're automatically going into the red. And we ask if we are not. Red, then we ask, have we had all three indicators in the green for two weeks? If the answer is no. Then we go into code yellow. And so the red really is the part where the disease is spreading. And we are not testing enough or it's growing. As as opposed to the yellow where the disease is fairly flat. So in looking into this, we've created a small graph that I can show you here. This one, basically what tells you the green line shows you the number of new cases per day. From March when we started measuring this. And the black line shows you the seven day rolling average. And we use a seven day rolling average because. You can see on the green line, there's a lot of ups and downs and that doesn't necessarily have to do with the disease itself. With other things. So for example, there are less labs that test on Saturdays and Sundays than they do Monday to Friday. And so the number of cases reported will change, not because we have more or less disease per se. But because there are less labs working on those tests. And there's also a, you know, most of the tests take three to seven days plus. You know, depending on the, some people will go and get tested right away, other people will wait one or two days from the onset of symptoms. And so there's a lot of variations that don't necessarily have to do with what's going on with the with the disease. And the seven day rolling average helps a little bit in smoothing out those differences, but it tells you a really good. Picture of how the disease is is happening around our city. And you can see that we peaked somewhere around July 12. And then we have been slowly going down. We are in this week, we had a little bit of of an uptick. Because there were a couple of days where where we had major number of new cases. For those two days. And then you can see on the far right hand side, we went high and then way low and then way up high and way up low. And so this, this kind of instability created a little bit of a of an increase at the end. And so this is the kind of of information that we would like to provide. And so this is the kind of of information that we would like to provide so that so that our our parents and staff and students have a little bit better idea of where the data is coming from and how the diseases is progressing, basically, on in in El Paso.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Soffin.
Dr. Medellin, thank you for for sharing the variables on this. I'm I'm just curious. We know sometime in the next week or two that the the city and the county, they're going to be pulling away a number of testing sites. And so that large, large volume that they've been getting, well, I stand corrected. The volume that they've been getting up to this point is going to go away. So does that does that take away from the 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 value of of the the testing rate as proposed?
What what will happen when those testing sites close is that we will have overall, we will have less total tests. And so the positivity rate will go up. And that it's by design because then we don't, we cannot measure us as accurately because we don't have as many tests happening as we should. Right? And so that will push our positive positivity rate up. And the other numbers there is is much harder to predict what what would happen. We don't know if the numbers is the same, will go down, will go up. That is a little bit more difficult. But our positivity will will definitely go up once once those close.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Delatorre, so when we talk about doing putting these up on our website, are we also going to talk about having clusters or, you know, increased infection rates, you know, within a certain zip code in our school district or even a school itself? You know, the city is having that discussion right now about identifying where events happen.
Lindley?
So for the most part, sir, we don't have it by school now. And and I think we would be encroaching on the HIPAA concerns if we were to pull that data at the school zip code level. But we can see just globally what a zip code is doing because that's published also on the city's website. But in terms of actually tracking it by a school, we'll know internally what we're what's happening at a campus when we do return for face to face instruction. But in the interim while we're remote, the only thing we have to go on is what the city publishes by zip code for its clusters or its assisted living clusters and things like that.
I I don't want to sound sarcastic. I I understand the concern about HIPAA and and I'm not asking to name names and that sort of thing, but I I I think the overall data is is not protected by HIPAA and the city has been wrong on this discussion. So this is a discussion we're going to come back to. And I'm going to ask President Ochoa to make sure that it happens on our next board meeting, please.
May I ask for clarity? Are you are you asking us to tell you the number of cases at a campus or strictly by zip code?
Um, you know what? I I think because people, I think because the district would not be comfortable, even though I'm comfortable with it, it would be appropriate to do it by campus in my mind. And I don't think there's a HIPAA issue there. But I do think that if we need to, we could report it by zip code because we have a couple of zip codes in our district that are are very hot right now when it comes to the number of cases.
I don't think it would be difficult at all to tell you the number of cases when we actually return for face to face instruction. Obviously, right now, the only type of information we would have by campus is related to employees. So how many did we quarantine? How many have we have positively tested and been out? We can tell you that. But I won't have student data, obviously, until students return.
And and I understand that, Ms. Leeper, and and I I guess just watching what's happening across the country and watching specifically Georgia and the challenges that they're having. You know, I I I think I think that's the reason I I'm I'm interested and and kind of almost insistent that we we share this is that this is part of the decision making that parents have to make, whether to send their kids to school or not. And so and it doesn't reflect, in my mind, it doesn't reflect poorly on the school. It doesn't reflect poorly on the leadership of the school. It just means that parents need to be aware of it and that we as a district need to do something. You know, and that's something maybe, you know, you know, amping up the cleaning or something, you know, we need to go and send some people in there to help us do things a little better. I don't know. I'm not looking to embarrass anybody. I'm just looking to provide as much information to the community.
We will certainly take a look at that. I don't think it will be near the quality data that Dr. Medellin has been able to put together and to model from. Just because we don't have the same data capturing availability, but we will certainly look into it and see what we can come back with.
Thank you, Ms. Leeper.
Thank you.
Yes, I think I think your question, we should put it to legal and then Susan look into that and see if that is a viable bit of data that we could provide. I know that HIPAA is very sensitive issue, but you know, you brought up some good issues, Mr. Emigus, but I that's why we have legal so they can look at and advise us to what what we can and can't do. Thank you. Before, Mr. Rosales, you have any questions? No. I can't hear you, Mr. Rosales. You're muted, Mr. Rosales. You can't unmute.
Okay, now, okay, hear me now.
Yes, sir.
I didn't touch anything. The the only comment is I sit here and I listen and taking into account Mr. Arshinera's comments and and the data that's been provided and all that. You know, we can, we can talk until the chickens come to roost. But we're dealing with with something that we're kind of trying to figure out something, at least the most the most appropriate approach. And and I hope the public understands that, as you've been, it's been commented before, that this board takes all the precautions. We're very, very, very concerned about the safety, the education of our children and our employees and the employees that give us all the support. As I said here, we touched a lot of a lot of things, a lot, there's been a lot of discussion. But we've got to move forward with the expectation that the numbers are going to get better. Yesterday, the numbers were good, and then this morning they shot back up. But I feel that hopefully the entire El Paso community will arise to the occasion and say, it's real. I do need to take certain precautions when I am around. And this is not something we can, it'll come and go. I know the leadership in this country says it's going to eventually vanish. I know what's going to vanish. Fact is that we're going to look after our children and his lead up to the best of our ability. And I I commend all of you for your concern. Most of you, well, some of you are more are more in tune to the the ramifications of what people are saying. I personally have talked to my my area. You know, the same the same issues have been brought up. There's parents that want it and have to have their children or rather have their children attend. And then some parents are pulling them out because of the threat. But we we're going to make the best decision for the 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 children that I just mentioned and the the teachers as well as the employees. And, you know, God, God help us. Let him be our guide. And let's move forward and stay right on top of it. If we have to have special meetings, depending on how things occur, I would really encourage that we do stay in contact with one another as a group. Let's not wait, postpone meetings and and be more proactive because this animal is not going to go away until eventually we, God willing, will get a vaccine throughout. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. I had some questions on the number three bullet. And I, Mr. Medley. One of them is how did you determine the thresholds for each one of the
The thresholds for for number three?
All three of them, like the seven day rolling average, how did you pick 25 cases out of 1,000? That that sounds like we're not going to have 25. You're taking sampling, right?
So, Mr. Troy, if I may, this is Lindley. Those are actually what the Public Health Department published. Those are not Dr. Medellin's and the district's metrics that we've been tracking all along. What's in the resolution and what's required for the TEA waiver application is driven by the city health authorities. So Dr. Okaranza provided those on Tuesday. And that's why I wanted to preface this discussion by saying we've been tracking since March and we've had our own metrics. The metric in your resolution is strictly from the Health Department and ours does not yet align to it. Obviously, we'll be making adjustments to now mirror what the city is asking of us.
So they said that we could open our schools if there's less than 25 cases?
I I don't believe that's what it says. That's one of the criteria, but I don't even think that Dr. Okaranza, I was trying to pull up the resolution.
Yeah, I mean, it's
So if you notice for ours, we said if there are two out of three of the categories, then we can move to the green level. I believe all three have to be true for two weeks and then we move to green. Otherwise, we're in the yellow. Dr. Okaranza's measures don't say, they don't tie to the application. So they just say, here's a measurement, but he doesn't tell us what will happen with the measurement and when. And so they're very early.
Where did we come up with those thresholds?
Did not come up with them. They're not ours. They're the health departments.
We have nothing That's word for word?
That's word for word from the Health Department, yes.
Seven day rolling average cases per capita, less than 25 cases per 1,000.
Yes, sir. That's straight from the Health Department.
But we're using that to determine how we open our schools.
Because TEA requires that we comply with the local health authorities' metrics to make the determination.
I understand the metrics. I'm I'm asking, how do we determine the threshold? I mean, even the the last, less than 7.5 on the positivity rate. I've seen already across the nation that there's 5% less than or 3% less than, so.
I think what she's saying is, once again, we did not create the thresholds. We're required by TEA to submit our local agencies' thresholds.
And they came up with a less than 7.5%? I'm I'm that word less is the one
Yes.
Is that word for word?
The answer is yes. It'll be yes if you ask again.
I'm going to ask again.
Okay.
You know, so on your red, yellow, and green. All these three bullets are going to be, some of them are are relative to each other, right? Like the positivity rate is is relative to the four day decline in the rolling average?
They are connected, yes, sir. Because the positivity rate is driven by the number of positive cases and the number of tested cases. If the number of positive cases go up, then the positivity rate and the number of of tested cases remain the same, the positivity rate will go up. And so it is
They're not they're not independent.
No, they they all depend on the number of positive cases out there. That is, that is the one measure that we can that we can get from the city accurately every day. And and those measures are are really how how everybody keeps track of these kinds of diseases based on the number of of cases that are that are identified. And then they use that metric in different ways to find different things about the disease.
So I'll ask you, Mr. Medley. On the seven day rolling average that the city posts, 25 cases per 1,000, that's they're using sampling based on the data that they collect every week.
We don't know how they came up with those numbers. I am working on trying to replicate them because the data that they provide publicly does not right away provide us with that information.
Yeah, because
But if I figure it out, I'll I'll let you know, sir.
Yeah, because on seven days, they can't test 100,000 people. That's why I'm, that's why I'm suggesting that they're using sampling for that.
Oh, in, okay, so so the question is, why are they're saying 25 for 100,000?
Yeah, that's why I want
Okay. Okay, so so the way that they measure this, one of the reasons they do that is because health departments need to compare themselves to other places that have different populations. And so if we want to know if El Paso is doing any better than Austin, we have to take into consideration that Austin is a larger city than we are. Or if we're comparing ourselves with New Mexico, with Las Cruces, we have to take into consideration that Las Cruces is much smaller. So if we only look at the total number of positive cases, it would be it would not give us a true picture to say, well, Las Cruces has 2,000 and we have, you know, 10,000. So therefore, we have, we are worse off because Las Cruces is much smaller than we are and they may have more per capita than we do. And so one of the ways that they do that is they grab the total number of cases for a certain number of days, they add them up. Normally, it's it's a week, but apparently the city is doing something else because I can't get them to to work that way. But they add up the numbers of of cases per week in a week. And then they divide that number by the total population in the city. So let's say you have 8,000 new cases, and this is, you know, much higher than we would have. But let's say you have 8,000 new cases. And we have about 800,000 people in our city. So you would take that 8,000 and divided by 800,000, and that would give you a a number per person. So that would be point 01 cases per person in El Paso. But the point 01 person per case per person doesn't make a whole lot of sense intuitively. And so what they do is instead of looking at the entire population, they look at hundreds of thousands. And so for the population in El Paso, instead of saying El Paso has 800,000 people, they say El Paso has eight blocks of 100,000 people. And so out of those eight hu- eight blocks of 100,000 people, how many are positive? And so that is the positive cases per 100,000 people that they're talking about. But it's a way that you have a number that is bigger than than a than a decimal, but it still can be compared to other places that are either smaller or larger than the city where you're at.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that that makes sense as as point 001 and you it doesn't, it's meaningless, but if you put it against a number, 25 out of 100,000. That is that you can see those hard numbers there. That's what I was trying to find out how that came about. But on determining this this green, the bottom one, where you showed on that it's yellow, it was red once. I forgot you had it there. And if we have that already laid out as the colors indicated and what the resulting result will be, because they're not and or or are they? They're all relative, like we said.
They're a combination and and it's a it's a combination that is is toward towards protecting our students and staff. And so the way that we're looking at this is that the two out of three look bad, then we stop right there. Out of out of safety.
And they will they're relative.
They are, they are relative, yes. And we try to make them so that they can be compared from one week to the next. And so I ran this numbers from all the way back to to when we have data. And we can accurately compare when we had 500 cases than when we have 4,000 cases. And so that that's why we make them relative because even if it grows, we want to be able to to have the same sensitivity. So if something if something goes gets worse, we want to be able to detect it right away. If something gets better, we want to be able to detect it also right away. And and the number of cases only go up because we're looking at cumulative. We're not really looking at the number of people that are sick right now, but we're looking at the number of people that have ever been sick. And so that number is always going to go up until it stops at some point and then it remains the same number forever when people are no longer getting sick.
Good. My last question is, okay, so we have this, we have the indicators. And we say we're yellow or green. What happens when these indicators, we're moving along, we're yellow, yellow or something, and then all of a sudden they go red? What is that going to be the impact to our schools?
So, Mr. Ochoa, keep in mind that we did the red, yellow, and green and the accompanying action before the city issued new criteria. So we don't know if they're strictly going to say, if we meet the three criteria, then we're green, and if we don't, we're red. We don't know yet how Dr. Okaranza is going to apply his three criteria. He has not told us that. All he has said is, here are the three conditions. He hasn't told us, you know, it's got to be a two-week and you can open, or if at any period, two of three are good, then are, are positive in our favor, then you can be in a yellow status. He has not given us that indication. So we're going to have to revise our reset, reimagine plan to comply with what the city comes out with when Dr. Okaranza actually issues the rest of this. He's only given us the metric now. When he gives us the application, we'll have to revise.
Also, he hasn't given us the application yet.
No, sir.
But we're using the, we're using the red, yellow, and green indicators.
Because we wrote our plan and measured data long before the city published anything. So now we'll have to adapt to comply with the city.
Okay. All right, that's a little bit confusing because, you know, yes, Ms. Austin.
Thank you. Just, just to, maybe it will help a little or maybe it will hurt, but this language in the resolution is from what TEA requires only about this transition period. It's not about overall school. So for example, what we can do during this extended transition period is limit the number of students who come back on the ground. So we can have not everybody come back. We can have, not only, we can even limit the people who want to come back, we can limit it. We've put in there that, that we're going to generally make it available to people who need it and want it. And we're supposed to indicate when we might cut that off and go back to the pure parents, either everybody who wants to come can come and everybody who wants to stay home can stay home. This is not about the red, yellow, green, which will show when everybody comes back to campus. This is only when we, because what they're doing is a transition phase. We're starting out with 100% remote. Then we're supposed to transition to the time by eight weeks when people can either come if they want in full or not come if they want to continue with remote. That's how it's set up. Because TEA is going to allow people to, parents to make that choice. For the eight weeks getting up to that time, we can phase into that stage. And this is about the second four weeks where we're phasing in to that stage where people get to come fully if they want. So this is a different measurement. It's a different set of parameters than the ones that are in the, the plan that the district has put out for a full, are we going to be fully open all the time and mandate that kids come back or aren't we?
Thank you, Ms. Austin.
I think we need to clarify too, if we can, Dr. Delatorre, I think it'd be good for you to do that, if possible, that for this particular school year, or is it true, parents have the choice to, regardless of all the different waivers we're requesting, once we get through the waivers, parents have the opportunity to either choose face-to-face instruction or virtual learning for this particular school year? Is that the case?
It is the case for the, during the transition period, following the transition period, we'd have to get some assurance from the state and TEA that we will not be penalized or jeopardize our revenue because the state of Texas has a compens, compulsory education law. Once the state determines that they want all students to return, then students have to return during the transition period. And all the way through what appears to be at least October 23rd of this fall, parents and students will have the option of remaining online for that entire period if they wish.
That was not what I understood from TA guidance, and I, and I, I need further clarification on that because from what I understood, for this particular school year, parents were going to have that option because that, that kind of changes things yet again for parents that are making these decisions as we go.
Are you, are you speaking to, your understanding is that TEA has already determined that students can remain online for the entire 2020, 21 school year?
For the parents that select that.
For the entire year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I want clarification on that, please.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so are there any other questions? If not, there's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
I will make a motion.
What's that?
Having it in front of me else, I would do it.
May I have a motion?
I'm sorry, I, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I thought, Catherine, were you waiting for a response now on to your question or, or can we move on?
I mean, I'm, we'll get the response right pretty, I mean, it's important for parents to know because they're making those decisions as they register their kids.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to commit to the answer that I believe is accurate. What I'd rather do with your permission is go back, look at it again and see if I can find language anywhere on TEA's website or call TEA directly to, to learn whether or not there's been something published out there that indicates that for the 2020, 2021 school year, regardless of what the data says, the medicine, all of that, that a parent has the option to remain online. Certainly, they can remain online if they enroll their child in an online school, and there are plenty of those available. But whether or not a school district is required, assuming things got much, much better, there was a vaccination, whatever have you, whether or not TA has already made that commitment. Because the tone that I get from TA and from the state is somewhat a sense of urgency to try and bring normalcy back when it's appropriate to do so. But I will get a definitive answer, and we will provide that to the entire board. And if that is the decision that TA has made, then we certainly will adhere to that and make all of our parents aware of that option.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so again, there's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
President Ochoa, I move to approve a board resolution as presented extending up, up to the end of the first eight weeks of instruction, the limitation on access to on-campus face-to-face instruction during such a transition period.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Lucero, second. Hey. I have a second, minus Lucero, then let's go ahead and vote. But Trustee Bustet, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote? Hey, he raised his fingers. Yay. Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Let's see. Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yay. Results are in, seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you all very much. This has been a very trying time that we've all been going through, and I'm sure we'll have some more, but we will persevere. And, and like Mr. Amidis and all of you who said, we are here to protect our kids, but to, to make sure that they get their education that is, that they need. We all know that. But we will proceed day by day and see how things proceed in the real world that we live in. So thank you all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Woodruff, thank you. Adjourned, thank you.
Nice weekend.
You too.
Thank you, guys. Have a good weekend.